Meeting to order. There's the binder at the table. Label, public copy, before materials for the public to view. Meeting agendas are available online as well at RRPS.org. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
For clarification, it was me that requested the meeting to be at four o'clock. I got a work obligation tomorrow morning in Minneapolis. So thanks, everybody that could be there at four. Appreciate it. Can I get an approval of the agenda? Motion by Albert Dahl. Supported by Judy Westby. Any discussion? If you none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Recognition of visitor input. We've got a few that have signed up. Alicia Schroeder is first. I'm in all of our speakers. We've got three minutes per speaker. Thank you.
All right, first off, just I've about to be honest and real and many people probably don't like what I have to say, but I believe it has to be said. So I understand that I'm on a teacher's contract, so I'm not even sure if my position is being eliminated or if it's just me in general, since I'm next on the list. But either way, I'm going to fight for this position because I know it's important for the student's success. My title is the K-12 curriculum coordinator, but curriculum is only a fraction of my responsibilities. The role is key in advancing our strategic planning and improving our school. A large part of my job is the implementation of the REDEC, which is required by the state of Minnesota. Starting next school, you are also required to hire a literacy lead, which would become a part of my responsibility as the state didn't give us money. What a surprise. This role is critical. A literacy coach supports teachers, ensures best practices, holds them accountable for implementing the training they received. This position excites me because this is what Rock Ridge has been missing, in my opinion. Teachers are the number one factor in student achievement and we need to support them, we need to provide training to them, and we need to push them to do better. The reality is accountability and support are essential. Without them, people can simply do what they want and that's not what's best for our students. This is a disservice and equity issue. A child's opportunity for success does not depend on what teacher they have. Every student deserves the same high-quality education, no matter whose classroom they're in, and we need to do better. I know this is not the culture we have here at Rock Ridge and most people don't like others coming into their classrooms, providing feedback and helping them grow. But that has to change. We need to learn how to take feedback and get better. If not, our schools will not get better. We will not continue to do things away or will continue to do things away. We have powers down them and our students will suffer from it. Again, I debated whether to speak up, but at the end of the day, I'm not coming to school or coming to work to make friends. I'm coming here to be a part of the change and advocate for the students of Rock Ridge. Another part of my job is to help support the instruction and assessment component of our strategic plan. This should be our top priority. I've tried to revive the site teams and committees, but participation's minimal. Getting teachers to commit to extra work feels impossible. But how do we improve if no one's willing to step up? How do we change this? We have three teachers who consistently join the committee meetings. Three. These are state requirements, yet we lack teacher representation. I've helped implement initiatives like Avid, LIDAR, ME, Medea, Pathwell, but they're not anywhere close to where they need to be. And we have a long way to go and a lot of work in these areas if we're going to do them with fidelity and have an impact. The things we're trying to do are prove and best teaching practices and benefit the students. I visited successful Avid and LIDAR and ME schools, and they work. But they require effort, they require change, and they require buy-in from the staff and everyone involved. This is critical to the success of Rock Ridge. And to be clear, I know teachers and principals work hard and we do have some great educators at Rock Ridge, but I also know we can do so much better, so much better. And honestly, as a Rock Ridge employee, can you honestly say you're satisfied with where we are? I am not. I am not satisfied with where we are. And cutting this position or splitting up its responsibilities will only set us backwards. Like, I would not keep my kid here if this position is not here. Like, why would I do that? So we just need to do better. And we're going to fail the community and everybody here.
Seventh graders is next on the list. There's some seventh graders that want to address the board.
Can their teacher address the board?
Sure.
I'm Dr. Shane Wetzel. I'm your seventh grade science teacher. Normally, I'm humble, but I'm not going to be humble tonight. Last three weeks been tough. I've had girls crying in my classroom. I have eighth graders. I don't teach eighth graders this year, but I'm having them in my classroom when they should be somewhere else. A picture is worth a thousand words and I've had a lot of letters and I can't read them to you. But I have a Wetzel wall. I sent you that letter. I showed you that picture about a week and a half ago. So I just picked a couple. And I want to tell you about my kids. I have 168 of them. And we are one. We talk about it every day. So this is Honors, period three. This is Severance. Severance has a petition going around on TikTok. I guess it's quite the thing. I'm not on TikTok. It's, you know, for young people. 168, 170, I don't know how many names he has on there now. Again, I don't have that many kids. But he took the time, got off his iPad, off his social media, and he's been doing this. I love this kid. This is Fritz. You talked to his mom last week. She's the one that said, you know, we can't lose the music program. This is her son, period seven. This is Alina and about 10 other of my former eighth graders. This was taken this year. Because I have kids in my classroom over. I taught them this year or not. And they wanted a picture. So they moved the seventh graders all the way and we took a picture. She works on Eighth Street at the breakfast place. And I'm proud of her of that. She does one heck of a good coffee. This is Steve. You might say, well, it's not Steve. Well, there's an inside joke on that. You can ask Nico why he's called Steve. I wrote him a letter before state last year, basically saying, you know what? I love you, Nico. But I'm going to love you a little bit more if you bring home a state championship. He has two more years. Now, he has me also on TikTok. And so I think it's fitting, although only old people probably watch the board meeting. Like I said, I love this man. Class one, Ellie Diana. Ellie is one of those that she hates me going to her basketball games. I hit about 50 extracurricular activities, every sport, drama, music. I get to them all. She doesn't want me there. She does this award. It was cheesecake. She doesn't like the cheesecake. She doesn't like where I sit. She came in today and said, you know what? I don't mean any of that. And I said, I know you don't mean any of that. Two years ago, you hired me and I said, I would build whatever class you give me the best, in this case, seventh grade science in the state. I'm in year two. Please let me do this. I'm here at 5:30 and that's an irritant because I've always started my workday at 5:00 a.m. It's me, the janitor, and you've got a courier and a white Suburban who rolls through about 5:25. I would like 24/7 access because when I can't sleep, I like to work. Truth is, I'm not good at much anything else. I teach. I'm not good at woodworking. I don't recreate. I don't snowmobile. I don't have a boat. I teach. These expenses, all these awards I do, the T-shirts, I love doing it. It's $6,000 to $7,000 a year. I pay for it. Try to hide it from the wife because she reminds me of it all the time, but it's worth it. I think it's worth it for my kids. Now, quarter three just ended. I have 168. We have, we are one. We are not 96%, we're not 97%. We are one. I have six kids that are not passing. Two I haven't seen for weeks. We can't get a hold of them and I miss them. Another two or three today. Three did not show up. But it's the goal, 100% pass every quarter. And I got in front of the two that showed up today and said, give me something. You can do this. Pass my course because we are one. Yes, you can get somebody to babysit your sound graders, but you're never going to find a teacher that can get the most out of their kids than I can. There's no laziness in teaching, but we're not the same. So whoever you get there, they're not going to be able to deliver and you will lose kids. You're just saying, yes, we're going to lose them because of online learning and because of the four-day schoolwork. You will. But as teachers like me.
Time's up, Mr. Wetzel.
That keep our kids here. You have a choice. You have a lot of discretion. Keep me.
Molly Peltier, next on the list.
Hi there. Thanks for letting me come back and talk to you again. There's just one thing I really couldn't let go that came up last week. And that is citing low music enrollment as somehow justifying or even requiring further cuts to the music program. At the meeting a week ago, Principal Winter stood here and said that the reason he chose to make cuts to music was because enrollment numbers in that department have declined. I find this reasoning to be supremely unjust. You've been cutting the junior high feeder programs and presiding over outright neglect of your elementary music programs. What did you think was going to happen to your high school enrollment? After all of that? To then use the consequences of your own decisions to justify gutting this department even further is quite simply beyond belief. Declining enrollment is certainly cause for concern. In fact, it is a distress signal. These programs need more support, more personnel, more instruction time. I realize that at a time like this, more of anything is too much to expect. But I think the very least you could do is refrain from reducing the staff and instruction time any more than you already have. Thank you very much.
Jason Tuzak is next.
Thank you, members of the board, for allowing me and everyone else here to speak today. It's really a great thing that our board allows us to do this and let the people of our community, you know, get our grievances out. Now, I'm here today because I'm a junior at the school and I came to this school. I'm open enrolled. I'm from middle-of-nowhere, Iron, Minnesota. I enrolled at this district for music and for arts programs. Now, these programs that have been slowly dying ever since Mr. Craig resigned last year and the cuts that made, we took a big hit this year. And I'm an a cappella choir. I'd say at least half of the kids dropped just because it wasn't Mr. Craig in front of the room. Now, if we continue to decrease staff and we cut a cappella, bel canto, cantory, all these other choirs and terms for having some other teacher sub in when they're not doing elementary to come in and do a senior high and junior high choir, it will make the enrollment for these programs decrease even more than they already have. I mean, this year alone, we saw that we only got eight, like, three, four eighth graders who were going into ninth grade to do cantory this year. Now, that's because the junior high choir program, there's just this select group of little kids who are a disturbance and they don't allow people like Mr. Fettig to teach well and get work done and accomplish what he wants to do. Now, cutting these programs more is not the right solution. We need to put more into these programs. Now, previously said, right now, asking for more is a lot. But if these cuts go through and what you guys are suggesting, you might as well board up the choir room now. Because I'll tell you, they won't survive these cuts. Right now, it is a bleeding dog. Now, you can either bring it to the vet or you can shoot it right now. Because I'll tell you, taking some tape and putting it on the wound, that's not going to fix anything. So please, don't cut music more. It's already so hard to find up in these rural schools and these rural communities. I beg of you, do not cut these programs anymore. They need investment and they need your help to, like, get back to where they were before the pandemic. So please, do not cut them any more than they already have. Because like I said, you can just board up that choir room right now if they take one more hit. Thank you.
Thank you. End of my list. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Wetzel?
I've come before you many times and I gave you numbers and you ignore them. Just this would seem like it makes an impact. So I'm going to give you an opinion. You're here because of financial mismanagement. I'm sure the extra 150 grand you spent on locker rooms for hockey over the last five years, I'm sure we better have spent on teachers. But you're too worried about 80 kids and what color their carpet was in their locker rooms. So now we're getting rid of a teacher because of it. At your informational meeting, you have the Rock Ridge current monetary reality. This is a wish list. This says your current monetary reality is no curriculum, no Suburbans, no buses purchased, wages remain stagnant, student population doesn't drop. Who in here believes a student population is not going to drop? Summer employment is not a responsibility of the district. Summer, no reductions in special education transportation, no reductions in federal funding. And to quote Dr. Schmidt from the informational meeting, it's more likely to go bad than good. Okay? This is not reality. This wish list is not reality. That same meeting, on option number four, if the school district reduces the budget by $2 million, under number two, if the school board again fails to reduce the budget appropriately for '26, '27, you're going to drop to 85 grand in the hole. Number three, if you were, if the school board fails to reduce the budget appropriately for '27, '28. Okay? So I'm going, this is not, you're not fixing anything today. Because even under this plan, you're still looking at cuts next year and the year after and the year after because your population is dropping. Your income is dropping. Your expenditures have to match it. You're talking about cutting 20 teachers. There's not a single cut. And you're getting rid of assistant coaches. You're not cutting any sports teams. What's more important, math, science, arithmetic? The being able to write a paper when you go to college? Or a sports team? The teachers are what's, you know, hockey teams, football teams are in building the future. Right? It's a great, it's a great pastime. These, the teachers are what you need to focus on. Start cutting your expenses where you can cut your expenses and leave these people in place.
Anybody else like to speak? Please.
Thank you, members of the board. I know I was just here last week, but my name is Kate Parks and I'm a first grade teacher at Parkview Elementary. Again, I'm one of the proposed cuts before you tonight. I wanted to give you a picture of what a typical day looks like in a class with only 21 six- and seven-year-olds. I say only in more of an ironic way because when you have young learners still learning how to read, regulate emotions, or just how to be a student, 21 does not feel like 21. From the moment my students come into class, I am attending to every need and question. Everything from a bloody nose, a sad student in need of comforting, pencil lead in an eye, shoe tying, getting snacks for a student who didn't eat enough breakfast, to students with vague and physical behaviors that require attention. And yes, all of those things actually happen today. Not to mention the actual teaching, progress monitoring, and data tracking that happen simultaneously. My students need to be assessed weekly and one-on-one in reading, which can take anywhere from one to five minutes per student. This is only their weekly checklisting. We also have a small progress monitoring group that we do interventions with multiple times a week, about 15 to 20 minutes per session. And we assess them individually every other week. During these times, we also need to have things prepped and ready for the other students to be working on independently. By this point in the year, there's typically quite a gap in ability levels in our room, too, that we must also accommodate for. This doesn't even scratch the surface of what we do in a day as I only have three minutes to speak. This picture gives a very general idea of a typical day across all of K-6. I don't know the high school side as well, but I can only imagine it is a similar story. I don't mean any of this to sound like a complaint. It is not a complaint at all. These are the things we do as teachers. And no matter what, no matter how many students, we make it work. But making it work isn't what is best or most effective. I love my job. I love my students. This job can be so fulfilling and I can't imagine doing anything else. But I just really want to emphasize that ours, as our class sizes grow and as the needs of our students become greater, this becomes too much for one person. There is simply not enough time in the day. We are no longer the most effective educators we can be when we are spread so thin. Our students deserve better than this. They deserve our best.
Anybody else like to speak? Please.
I'm Irene Henderson. I taught English and French at Virginia High School for many years. I'm currently retired. But I cannot leave here without saying to you, please, do the best you can to keep the teachers. The teachers are what makes the school. Our students inside the walls of all of our schools are our futures. They are what are depending on us to give them. We purport that we have the world's best workforce. You don't get that without keeping good teachers. I remember what it was like to be a first-year teacher and how difficult it was and how I was so frightened and everything. But by the time I retired, I had it down pat. I knew exactly what I was doing and I could get it done. These teachers deserve a chance to continue to work, to perfect their craft so that our students will be the best in the state. Please try your best to keep the teachers. I'm sorry, this was totally impromptu, but thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? You're next.
Hello, my name is Melaina Duffy. I started this meeting with nothing prepared and came here to listen, but I can't sit by and watch this happen. I participate, I have been participating in orchestra since fifth grade and the proposed cuts to cut the fifth-grade orchestra program and reduce the junior high lessons would destroy the music department. You can't add more stress on music department. And the reason why numbers are going so bad just because Mr. Craig left. But if you give time, if you give time to the music program to repair itself, it will. Making those cuts right now will destroy it, as Jason Tuzak said. Many emails were sent from the orchestra department, especially from Haley Von, most recently from Haley Von Schreiber. All of us signed off that Mrs. Wilcox should not be pushed to do that. And the proposed cuts, different subject, to the teachers. The teachers make up our school. I stay, instead of doing full-time PSCO, I stay at our school because of the teachers making a good place. If you do that, class sizes will go up. As someone who has mental health issues herself, I would not be able to handle that. And I've pushed more people to do PSCO. Having the good teachers and the good, many opportunities, keep the students in school and build a sense of community. Going back to music program. Each one offers, gives students opportunities to participate in community events and helps them later on. For instance, my, being able to participate in music all my life has given me the opportunity to apply for scholarships and continue that in college. That's why I'm prepared, have prepared, or not prepared. But if you were to cut the teachers or cut the music department, the community of Rock Ridge will go down so far and money needs to be reevaluated and managed much differently and not in cutting things.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Troy?
Oh, sorry. My name's Troy Caddy. I've been here for 19 years in the Virginia School District and the Rock Ridge School District. I didn't want to talk today, but I want to make sure that the community knows, you guys know, what the numbers are. In four years, if you move forward with these cuts, we're at 42 and a half FTE, teacher. Forty-two and a half teachers in four years. We have more administrators than we did before we consolidated. There are positions that we wanted. There were things that we wanted to do. Financially, you guys, the budget is telling us that we can't do it. You can't continue to cut out of the teaching unit and expect us to continue to offer the programs that we wanted. You can't continue to have class sizes rise and rise higher than they've ever been. You can't just look at what the average number is going to be and say, that's going to be the class size. Because every teacher in here knows, when you tell us what that average average class size is, we're going to have one that's at 25, and we're going to have one that's at 45. You can look at the average class sizes that were set for this year, they were supposedly great. I had a class size in eighth grade, steam, teaching electronics, teaching wiring. I had 38 students in my class. One could drop, I had 37 by the end. Teaching 37 eighth graders how to wire outlets and lights, something that they really love to do, but getting around to 38 doesn't work. Your class sizes, no matter what is said to you, that average class size, that's not the number, that's not our reality. It's never going to be our reality. So when you're saying you're cutting all these teachers, that class size is going to be harder. And next year, I'm going to come back, and I'm going to say, "I told you so." So that's one of the reasons why I'm here. On March 4th, you said that you were going to cut 1.1 million dollars out of the teaching staff. That was the number that was set forward on March 4th. This doesn't have dollar amounts. Do you even know how much money you are cutting with these cuts? It blows my mind that you do not have dollar amounts on here. You should know, because at the end of the day, you're doing a budget that has dollar amounts attached to it. That should be given to you. You were looking at 1.1. When we figure out these, and we don't have all the information, we don't know who's doing health insurance and who's not doing health insurance, but just on a rough estimate, and I'm willing to bet my estimate is low, we're at 1.4 to 1.75 million dollars that you're cutting with these cuts. March 4th, you were at 1.1, so now you're at 1.75. Great, we're going to save some more administration positions. I'm not saying that I don't want those positions. You're telling me that the budget cannot afford it. I don't want to be here next year. I don't want to do this next year. Every single year that we do this, we lose more and more students. We lose more and more credibility. It's time for us to get a better PR team and start figuring things out. The fact that you come here today and you don't have all of the cuts for the district, you, we knew this last year. We knew this in, be, first semester, that you were going to have to make cuts. Dr. Schmidt should have came to the board in January and said, "These is what we're looking at." You should have straight numbers in front of you now, not last-minute rushed thinking. I know that people have thought about this a lot. I know that you don't want to make these cuts. I've talked to a lot of you. You all have big hearts, and you don't want to make these cuts, but at the end of the day, you knew that you needed to do it. You got to be looking at the dollar amounts, and really, 42.5 FTE out of the teachers' unit. Where else are you going to go? And next year, I will come back, and I will tell you what our class sizes are. And I hope they're the estimate that you give us, but if we're going to have that, we're going to have to have the best scheduler that we've ever had. And we all know what the writing on the wall is going to be, and it's going to be a lot more than that. You know where you're at, you need to make decisions. We cannot continue to do this year after year after year. Next time you hear somebody say that a dollar amount is a drop in the hat, call them out on it, because that's not true. Every thousand dollars, every 500 dollars, you got to start looking at that, because it adds up. Sick and tired of this. Four years in a row, we were promised a lot. I was proud of what we were doing. All of the teachers were proud of what we were doing. We still want to do it. We got to quit wasting money. Quit sending people all over the place. Every thousand dollars matters, and until you figure out the budget, quit wasting damn money.
I'd like to talk, John, is it okay?
Sure.
Um, I should have done it right at the beginning of the meeting when approving the agenda, but I, I thought when we left last Friday, that it was going to include the non-staff on the agenda and the teachers, all of it, and we wanted to do the non-staff first, so we could see what those numbers were. That's not what we have tonight. I hope we can't add anything on. I talked to MSBA today, we can't add anything on to the agenda, so I really would like to table, um, the agenda.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to table the agenda and have it next week. I want the non-staff first, and then the teachers. For a regular board meeting, a special meeting, we can't, we cannot add.
Regular meeting, next regular meeting is in two weeks, not next week.
On the 14th, April 14th.
April 14th.
Excuse me, point of order, are we still in public comment?
No.
No.
Okay.
If that was my understanding as well, I thought we were going to have, um, because, like I said, we were kind of doing this backward from what I wanted, and I still haven't gotten information that I wanted, and, um, I know that we have till, we have time, we do. I don't, I feel like we're saying that we're rushed, but I don't think we are rushed, and I'm, I'm for tabling it.
I, I would agree. I thought everything was going to be on the table tonight, and I, I seem to remember even Chair Yuhon saying that we were going to do it all today, and today was decision day, so I would agree with you. That's what I intended to see as well. And, you know, and I, I did call Noel regarding that and was under the impression we were going to add things on to the agenda today, but being that, you know, it's a special meeting, I don't believe we can add, so, um, yeah, just was a little disappointed, too.
So, members of the board, what happened is that your last board meeting went so long into the evening, and that this one was starting at four, you need three days posting notice, so we couldn't add things to the agenda, because that other board meeting was over with before this one started. You certainly can delay if you would like to, and we certainly can bring this up, but I do want to stress to the board, you do need to reduce the budget. You have not done this for a number of years, and I keep telling you, you need to reduce the budget. I've been, this is not new, and so you are going to have to make some reductions.
We are aware that we need to reduce.
But yeah, you can delay if you would like.
I would agree. I mean, all of us are, are well aware that we need to reduce, it's just, there's other positions that we need to be looking at, um, in administration, not just the teacher, probationary teachers and, um, ULEs.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'll add, I think that the teachers from when we were here last week, I think, I'm getting the sense that they feel like they're the first ones out there, and then see what sticks there when, and it's unfair to them, they would like to see all of it together. I don't know why we haven't done that on a regular basis, just have it all, have the list all together, because for them to know by April, it would be the same as a janitor to know by April, so they could start looking for a job. It would be the same thing, you know? Everybody, everybody that's on the list has to look for a job.
Well, you know, when, when we do the non-staff first, if that's going to be okay with everybody, um, we got to see what we, pardon?
Non-teaching staff.
Non-teaching staff. I think after, you know, we'll see what passes, what doesn't, we're going to see what monies we have, or what monies we've cut after that, then, then we'll be doing the teachers, so, yeah, this agenda is just not correct.
And I guess when I thought, you know, my thought when we were going to do, you know, budget of the whole committee, that we would talk more about like specific categories within our budget, like look at advertising, or just to see what we spend, and I've never seen that, and I just wish that we could have something, even, not even all the categories, but like just the top categories, because I literally have no idea what we spend, and I, I think a lot of board members probably don't know either, so that would be very, very beneficial before our next meeting.
Yeah, I think.
I really thought we'd have discussions about it, like, okay, we're spending this much in whatever, and like, you know.
Example.
And maybe you're already doing that, maybe, I know you have a committee that works really hard, I don't want to take anything away from them, but I don't really know even what you discuss, I just don't. Um, and I'd like to see those numbers, since it's really our head on the chopping block.
Example of when, how much we're paying for plowing.
Right.
Et cetera, in those details, you know, not just plowing, but there's so many things behind the scenes, it would be nice to have the details of how much that costs, what can we cut back, you know?
And maybe you are, you know, we are trying to cut back, but it would just, I don't have that information.
Right. It would be nice to have the information in front of us. That way, we would be, because like you said, it's our, our heads on the chopping block, and then we can know. And then also to add to that, it would be nice to have the numbers for how much were the list of, um, teachers that we're saving. We have an approximate in a group, but to Troy's point, having the savings there, so we could fine tune it just a little bit better, know what we have to deal with.
Something to reconcile against it.
Yep, yep.
But also to, um, the teachers that took the early retirement, how was that calculating in? Are, you know, are those, is that subtracting teachers that we were going to cut? You know, how much are we really saving? Because it seems like it would be more than 144,000 dollars.
Same, I would think the same.
We will get those dollar figures for you on that one, if you want to see that exactly. Yep, you can do that.
Well, you, you think if they were each, you know, the package, their package is 100,000 dollars, that's 400,000 dollars, and we gave them 40,000, you know, 10 each, so do we have 360,000 that we're going, that we are gaining from, from that, from the teachers that retired?
All right, I will go dig into the numbers more, more intensely. You've seen the numbers per staff member, uh, but keep in mind that 2.8 million that you're targeting for, that was not even following the state of Minnesota guidelines, and you told us to use a different formula. So 2.8 is it. If you would have followed the other way, it would have been 3.4 million. We're not doing that, we're looking at the 2.8, but we will absolutely do this average, following the utilities.
Any other, any other expense line that you think there could be some wiggle room in? I mean.
Sports programs, how many sports, how many sports programs we offer, how much they cost.
I know a lot of that stuff's in the audit record, I'm assuming that we could.
Yep.
None of us are CPAs, so we.
No. Right. I mean, you know, on the list that I gave you last Friday, you know, that came up to 2.3 million, you know, but we got to be tough and do this cutting, so it doesn't hit our teachers.
Some of that stuff on your list was blue sky, you know, if you will, money, money that not there. I mean, I liked your list, and I appreciate your effort putting it together, but some of it wasn't immediately tangible, so I mean, uh, like the, like the Gilbert property and the no raises, those, that was half a million bucks right there, so I appreciate the effort, but some of it just isn't.
Tangible.
Right away, we can take that 500,000 and put it in the bank. Any other discussion?
We have a motion and a second.
All those who favor singing by saying aye.
Aye.
Both.
Pass unanimously. I believe this, uh, that's it. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
[inaudible].
[inaudible].
[inaudible].